Today is Tuesday, October the 15th, and our evaluation committee has hereby called to order. Joyce Doris Coleman, Board Chair.
Michelle McKissick, District 1.
Amber Hewitt, District 8.
Stephanie Love, District 3.
Sabra Ote, District 5.
Marie Fagin, Superintendent.
Justin Bailey, General Counsel.
Thank you. We're now in the hands of Ms. Tamika Hart-Wigington.
Thank you. Good early evening, everybody. I want to do that again, like, I'm speaking to y'all. Good early evening, everybody. I tell you, we are here again, Part 3. We're going to try to get through as much as we can. As you all recall at your meeting, you noted that this meeting, because it's right before your work session, you may not still finish. And so, you still have the target of October 25th, is my understanding, to wrap up what your evaluation process will look like. But this is Part 3 of the planning process. And so, I'm not going to read all of this. We know our norms that we tried to focus on. We are still continuing the process for establishing this year's evaluation process for your superintendent. Today, our focus is on reaching agreement on the suggested weights of the competencies and discuss how to develop your measures and the rest of your process. And so, first, for the agenda, do a quick recap of the previous meetings. Highlight agreed-upon recommendations already. We need to address some outstanding decisions. We'll review and reconcile the current recommendations and then outline next steps. And I'm going to try to go through this pretty quickly. But please, if there's questions, you need to stop me and let me know. So, just to recap, so, the board met on Thursday, September 26th. During that meeting, you reviewed the policy and the superintendent's contract revisions regarding the annual evaluation. You reviewed the current evaluation instrument. You recommended, the board recommended, use of the current evaluation. And then, you moved decision on weights to the next meeting. You met again on September 30th. You, if you recall, you went through individually and discussed your own recommendations about the weights. And then, you came to an agreement on what your recommendation to the superintendent for the weights would be. You also agreed to recommend the incorporation of June 2024 established priorities and asking the superintendent to recommend quantitative measures for those priorities. So, today, you're ordered into superintendent meeting to continue finalizing the instrument and the process. So, your actions to date, so, the agreements, and I'm going to leave it to the chair and the superintendent to stop, correct me if I'm misstating something. But my understanding, the agreements are so far. So, the board recommended the use of the current evaluation instrument that has been in place since about 2013 for this school year, and the superintendent agreed to that. The outstanding decisions are the evaluation competency weights, incorporation of quantitative measures, the timeline and process for inform evaluation, and timeline and process for form evaluation. So, I'm going to have this slide, and we'll come back to this because this is a decision you have to make today. But I do want to make sure we can just highlight the other things that have to take place. And so, what I have here is what the current evaluation, the sections and the weights, what the board recommended coming out of its last meeting with student achievement changed to 25%, staff relations increased to 20%, and the superintendent's recommendation to keep the competencies as they are in the current evaluation. Is that correct? Okay, so I'll come back to that. So, this is where the discussion will lean on today. So, on the quantitative measures, just, so this is the language from the superintendent's evaluation, and it calls out both a quantitative ratings piece of the evaluation and a qualitative ratings to measure performance. You all came together and agreed that the qualitative ratings show up in the current evaluation as it is, the competencies in the current evaluation. And you have to come together on what it looked like to have quantitative measures in the evaluation. And so, the board's quantitative measures recommendation was to ask the superintendent to suggest two to three quantitative measures for each of the June 2024 established priorities. Now, I don't know where we are, Madam Chair, I don't know where we are on that piece, but something to be discussed today, too, on the quantitative measures and that board recommendation. And then, the other piece that you still have to make decision on is the inform evaluation process discussion. And so, in the policy, just to ground us, the policy simply says nothing in this policy is intended to preclude the ongoing informal evaluation of the superintendent's performance. The superintendent's contract is more specific. It says mid-year each year, but no later than six months after the annual evaluation in May. The board and superintendent will conduct an informal mid-year evaluation. That evaluation will be by individual board members, will address progress on each of the performance objectives, and shall be provided to the superintendent. If you recall, we noted that you probably won't get today, because of the short time of this meeting, to what that could look like or even what this mean for you all. But just keep in mind, that is another decision that you still have to come to agreement on. And then, the other final decision you'll have to make by the 25th is just what is the actual details of the formal evaluation process? And so, from the policy, just to ground us again, the policy says the evaluation will be a composite of the evaluation by individual members, but the board as a whole will meet, as provided by law, with the superintendent to discuss the composite evaluation. The form evaluation shall include a discussion of strengths and opportunities for improvement. Evaluation ratings below satisfactory shall require written explanations. Both the board and superintendent shall prepare for the formal evaluation. The superintendent will conduct and submit a self-evaluation with any supporting documentation to board members. And board members shall document the evidence used in rating the superintendent's performance. So, that's what the policy says. Now, then, there's others in there about, you know, how you do this, but just from the perspective of what you need to decide. And then, in the superintendent's contract, excuse the small print, it gets more specific where it says, "The board shall evaluate the superintendent no later than May 1st." This is the first time a date shows up. And then, the superintendent will conduct and submit a self-evaluation with any supporting documentation at least 14 days prior to the form evaluation. And the reason to raise this, again, because the contract requires more than the policy does, because the policy just says shall submit, this specifically says at least 14 days prior to the form evaluation. And then, it just goes on to talk about, you know, the requirement of a written explanation, the discussion of strengths and opportunity, and if it is unsatisfactory in any respect, describing writing in reasonable detail, specific instances of that unsatisfactory performance, and that it should include recommendations as to areas of improvement in all instances, and so on, as you would have in an evaluation. The reason this is important, because you got to, at some point, you have to, it just said no later than May 1st. So, you will have to decide the date, so that then the superintendent will know what is 14 days prior to that date. So, this is why by the 25th, you're not going to probably discuss this today because there's some other bigger details you need to still work through, but just keep it in mind. Any questions on any of that? Commissioner Love had her hand. When you did it, as soon as I say any questions, then you did that. Okay, so no questions, all right. So, here, so, back to here. So, you have to first, my suggestion for a process for this is, Madam Chair, you could have explained the board's recommendation that you see here, or ask a board member, too, if you recall how you got to 25 and 20. I think Amber was kind of a spokesperson for that. And then, Dr. Fagin's, then, talk about the recommendation that differs, and then figure out how do you come to an agreement.
Commissioner Hewitt Garcia is going to explain.
So, in the discussion and the individual ratings, we did an average. And where I saw the most movement was student achievement and staff relations in neither direction. And I think for staff relations, for me, was the one, giving them equal weight to the board, given the number of staff, and the source of data that we would have from evaluations, but also where we can direct resources. I think the opportunity to learn about how to move further faster, a lot of information would come in through that staff relations. We all agreed student achievement should still be the highest weight, which is why we kept it 25% above all the rest. But the, I would have one more, I have one more. And just like thinking about the, with no end in mind, we know that the work is done through our staff, and the consequences of not having that detailed look and priority towards that, I think was the general consensus. But if any of my colleagues would like to share anything else? That was the reason for the shift.
Board Member Ote.
Great evening, Superintendent and Chair. Bye, Chair. I agree with Ms. Hewitt Garcia. Staff plays a huge role in moving our district forward, and I think it should be given the same weight as governance and board relations. Anything that we're going to have to get done is going to have to be done through the staff alongside with us and, of course, superintendent. So, I think that it should be given the same amount of weight as the other two. So, I thought it was pretty fair to have that come to 20%. And then, of course, student achievement is still the highest at 25%.
Commissioner McKissick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to illustrate, I differ from this perspective, simply because, and I agree that absolutely staff relations and getting that input, not that one is more important or valued than the other of, you know, board relations and what have you. But in light of the fact that we are really on the cusp of changing our whole, you know, formula here, just for the sake of what everything else is going to change as well as we look at this, so, I'm really just hesitant to go and change these percentages when they were so close to begin with, when you averaged them out, just to keep the evaluation as the evaluation that we've been working with, you know? And we said, it definitely needs to change and have improvements. But this just seemed like changing midstream, putting a Band-Aid on something that has a much bigger, broader overview, that we can be more thoughtful about it, since our timeline is so tight and having to make a decision on this. So, that's why I wavered in support of making these percentage changes.
Commissioner McKinnon.
Thank you. I think one of the things that we also talked about, I agree with both board member Hewitt Garcia and with board member Ote. If you recall the discussion, we talked about what's under those, what's really being measured. It's around process. And because of this process, the reality of the situation is that, out of fairness, we are keeping the same competencies. Also, out of fairness, there was a, we wanted to make sure that, to Hewitt Garcia, that double name is going to get me, but it's better than calling you something other than, you know? I think out of abundance of fairness and equity in really looking at what these are measuring, again, process, I think to the point that we made, that this is, we're not going to, things happen. You get to student achievement through staff, from the school building to the administration. And that's through, as demonstrated in those processes, that are then describe each of those areas. So, I think that is what we made a decision collectively last meeting, that we felt we should give credence to staff relations and governance and board relations in this particular instance, understanding that when we come back next year, it's probably going to be something different. But we wanted to make sure that we had balance, we had, and that we were not making any significant changes in the tool itself. So, I think with the explanation, I think that you all both so well explained there, I think that's the reason why we collectively made the decision that it would be 20% for staff relations and 20% for governance relations, taking that 5% down from student achievement. So, I'm in agreement with what we discussed at the last meeting.
Superintendent.
Good evening, everyone. So, I elected to keep the evaluation the same for the very reason that the board submitted the recommendation, which was to keep the tool the same. And so, for me, that was literal, keep it the same. And where there are opportunities to strengthen, which is what I hear everyone sharing, and I would agree, as deeply as the competencies, the weights, as well as the components that are connected to each one of these five areas, all need to be strengthened. And so, to take the opportunity in this moment to make an attempt to balance, which would not balance out, the evaluation, I don't believe would do that and do not support the same. What I will say is the work that is being mentioned as a regard to support the recommendation to change the weight is being done. I think I've been very transparent in acknowledging the opportunities here. And so, to increase my evaluation in this regard, as a, under the guise of this is how we get the work done, I believe that it is not the way forward in terms of how we offset the culture that exists, because I do understand why this particular area was chosen and not community relations, although when I was a candidate, what was emphasized to me is, how will you work with the community? And that was what was underscored multiple times through multiple questions and certainly multiple follow-up questions, and even as a matter of how the layout and the format of the search was in terms of round two. And so, where I have doing hard work and doing the work that is necessary, and I'm also not afraid to be evaluated and held accountable for the same. I simply do not believe that the piecemealing in this particular moment is how we best created the type of tool that can hold any CEO and leader of an organization of this magnitude, not just me, but when I am gone, that this is a tool that one could be proud of, and certainly one that we know can shift a district forward. I also know that what I plan to bring far exceeds anything that is in this tool. And so, no one can hold me to a higher measure than me. But I do understand, for the formality of carrying out an evaluation, that a tool is necessary. I simply disagree with shifting the weights in this moment.
Commissioner McKinnon.
I just want to say, I hear you, I receive it, but I think, and yet, I think the board had some considerable discussion around it, which I, I'm sorry you weren't available to come and hear that, because we could have had a much more robust discussion during that time. However, again, I think the spirit and of the, and even just the content of the evaluation tool itself is the same. We didn't change any of the things that go under any of these items. What we did say is that, as this particular board views it, that this is important for us when we look at each of those, if we look at each of those processes under each of those individual competencies, that these are processes, and that we want to make sure that it is clear that these are what we feel are important at this point and in this time. And so, I hear you. I think, we all hear you, we understand. I think we had robust discussion, again, and I would recommend that we stay with what the recommendation is, which is the 20, and 20% for staff relations and 25% for student
So, Madam Chair, I'm asking from Ms. Tamika Hart-Wigington. So, what are the next steps if there's the dissension? Because you mentioned that there had to be this bit of collaboration between the board and the superintendent, and there is not even fully alignment from the board regarding these changing of competency weights.
Hold on, hold on before you answer. Let me get Keith Williams, boy, Commissioner Williams, and then, so it can all be together, okay?
Yeah, I have some concern about it. I do know, I do believe, as a matter of fact, I know that achievement and growth is a large measure in this, I get that. But there is no measure at this time of year for it. So, where would we get it from for this particular evaluation? Because the test is not administered until the end of the year, and it is not received until June of July. So, where would the data come from to even have this under? How would we get the data for achievement and growth if we don't have it at mid-year?
So, Keith, Commissioner Williams, I'm sorry. It's, who's talking? So, so, your two parts is, first, what is your instrument? And then, you work on what data set you get for evaluation, just like any other evaluation. So, you'd have to, that's one of the, so, for instance, the contract says May 1st, right? Your policy doesn't say May 1st. The superintendent's contracts say May 1st. So, you all have to decide together, and even usually, it's best to ask the superintendent, what's the best evidence that you expect to bring to show these measures? That's usually where superintendents say, I'm going to use these data set for this, this data set for that, right?
Well, I don't see that as a
Don't, let me finish, let me finish.
Because the state decides what data and achievement is, and that's what teachers have to use.
So, we do have a norm, right? One mic. So, you asked me a question, I'm trying to address it, and then
I asked a question, I didn't know that you would be, I didn't know who the answer would be coming from.
Turn my mic off then.
You're done, you can't. I'm just saying, if you're going to have one, you have to have some measurable data at this time that will show achievement and growth, and we don't have it.
So, board, that is exactly right. You're not at that phase yet. You have an entire process that you have to complete. You first have to decide what is your instrument. At some point between now and the 25th, you do need to decide. And that's usually not led by the board, that is coming from the superintendent. Here is the data set, here are the, here are the kind of data I'm going to present to show achievement, to show business and finance, to show governance and board relations. So, you're exactly right, you're just not at that point yet. You don't even have an instrument that you've approved yet. So, you're right. Then, you all have to decide that in lieu of everything that you've just said, right? Because there, some of this is going to be limited because of timing. And so, then, you just have to agree upon knowing that. How then do you use that? What's the trade-off? What data will you plan to use? So, you're right, you're just not, that's not something that you'll decide today before you get the, once you understand the instrument, the weights, then you'll come back as part of the entire process of what? And usually, again, that's, the superintendent usually comes and says, here's what I plan to use to offset or to show, to support. Because if you call, in the policy and in the contract, it says the superintendent will present supporting evidence and documents. So, y'all, so you would expect that the superintendent will say to you, here's what we're going to use to support the student achievement, the various pieces of it. So, yes, you're right. And part of it is, there's a date that's established by contract that says May 1st, so y'all have to deal with that. That is not your policy, but the superintendent's contract said May 1st, so you have to deal with that and what that's going to be about the data. I do want to say that in efforts to collaborate, I think you should change, in efforts to collaborate, I think you all should think about how the conversation you just had. It was not about collaboration, it was just about each side proving their point. It's a partnership, y'all are a team. So, it's not about, it's really about what's in the best interest of the district, and what's in the best interest of what you're going to do to make the statement. So, one question I would say, to the board, if the initial, you know, what's in the initial form, if it had different numbers, would you still come back to that, to the superintendent? If the initial said 25 and 20, would you still say, I don't think that that's fair? So, I think that you, like, and so, part of, you're in the time now to change it, because your policy and your contract says by October. You're in the time to change it. What would be, what would not be fair is if you did it in November. So, you're doing it at the time that you're supposed to. I would say, commend you both on saying, here's the instrument that we want to use. I think the gulf between you is not as big as probably the conversation you just had. And I think you should be trying to figure out, and I think making, so, it's not about, well, it's not fair to change it. Why is student achievement at 25% or student achievement at 30% so off or so right? Why is staff relation at 20% or staff relation at 15% so off or so right? So that you can fully understand each other and where each other coming from, so that you can get to what's in the best interest of the children and the staff and the community and everything. One thing I will, I will say, the, Dr. Fagin's, the search had questions across all of these. So, it didn't just ask about community relations, it did ask about all of these, because it covered the current evaluation. And so, there were questions across all. And so, I don't think any of you are saying these things are not important. It's five of them, you can only get to 100, right? And so, and so, the evaluation at some point is still coming up with 100% of something. And so, when, you know, and so, you know, board, why are you saying, because the change is staff relations of student, student achievement? Like, what is it about that for you? And then, the superintendent can respond, what is it about that? And not procedural, and not about, well, we shouldn't, we shouldn't do, like, we shouldn't do this because this is what was there. Because I don't know that what was there is so perfect. So, just let me say that, that's just another board over a decade ago that established this. You are the board now that's having to establish for this team, for this year, what it should be.
Board Member McKinnon, Board Member Hewitt Garcia.
I think what would be helpful is if we looked at what comes under each of those. Do we have that? I think that would be helpful, because I think we made the decision around these based
Yes, so, every time I just add, and so, the other slides are still in it, and so, I just, I can add to it, so, it's there, but I mistakenly hit the wrong button, I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah, I just stopped. Yeah, see, he said I shouldn't have turned it off. I just stopped the presentation, I didn't.
While they're bringing the system back up, will Commissioner Hewitt Garcia make her point or statement, I'm sorry.
So, I heard you, Superintendent, I appreciate you sharing your perspective. I think one thing that I heard, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that there were ulterior motives around changing staff relations, or that was maybe the feeling
Or that was maybe the feeling that you had for that weight when you got a different impression? Like, I, I just want to be on the record and my colleagues can speak for themselves, but I think they would agree that this was just looking at whoever, whatever leader is sitting in front of us, what's most important. I will say that the biggest, the area that had the most difference was actually budget and finance. It just balanced each other out more. So more board members wanted to change that category than any other one. There was just a bigger swing in other areas. That being said, like, this evaluation, whether it's weighted at fifteen percent or twenty percent, a three or a five, you're still talking about a four-point-five to five? And if you're feeling like, what I don't want to have the feeling be is that there is an integrity of the process or, or not able to get to agreement, where I don't know if that five percent is actually going to make a difference. But I would like to be on the record saying staff relations in the future does need to change, and we do need to include staff. But I am willing to keep the weights the same. Because I think the most important part is figuring out what those quantitative, qualitative, like, percentages are, and what are those concrete things we're going to measure? Like, we want this to feel like a good process. This is not, this is, so we all get better and we sort of kids, right? This is not, I, I want, I don't want it to be adversarial. So I, I know that the, you know, one to five, regardless of that twenty-five or fifteen or twenty, is not going to make a huge difference in the end. And if you're feeling some type of way about it, I think we keep it the same. But I, I do believe and stand by the things that fall under staff relations, recruits and assigns best personnel, implements regu- rigorous performance evaluation systems. Those things are really consequential to our system. So I do want that to be part of future discussion. But I am saying to my colleagues, I am amenable to keeping the weights the same, just given how I don't think it's going to make a huge difference in the end.
That's not the one?
I'm, I'm, I'm waiting on, what you calling on the other? Yeah, yeah.
Board Member McKissick, then Board Member McKinnon.
Thank you. I just want to echo that. I also agree that the weights need to be adjusted along with so much else with this evaluation. This is a conversation that didn't just start within the last few weeks with this now board. This has been a part of the conversation for quite some time. Actually, I think it started, you know, it's been, it's been a while, it's been, been a while. So, um, we all agree on that, that that is the case, that I, I would love to see staff relations have more of a weight, because that includes all sorts of staff, not just our teaching staff, our administrative staff, and, you know, including our staff that takes care of engineering in the buildings and what have you. But at this point, I'm like, if we are going to change the instrument to really do that overhaul, I just wanted to put that level of time and focus and attention on it, as opposed to cramming it into a matter of a couple of weeks here when we're at the deadline. That is my concern. And just, if we're going to keep the instrument, let's keep all of the instrument, and then make significant change and really do it, really do it, and give it all the proper weights that it deserves.
Board Member McKinnon.
Thank you. So what I want to make sure that I want to remind all of my fellow board members is our discussion over the last couple of weeks during these evaluations. And I think what, we had a very robust discussion last time, which really talked about, I think what we're doing is we're looking at the header, and we're not looking at what it's actually measuring. So if we look at what it's actually measuring, again, I want to bring to board members and superintendents' attention that these are processes. And someone, I think Board Member Garcia said very, very clearly last meeting, that someone can do all these things and see no movement. So in our effort to stay in alignment with all the work you're doing, Superintendent, since you got here in April, we want to make sure that this is an appropriate, appropriate illustration, demonstration of, of the work that has been going on for the past, what, six, eight months? So when you look at these things, these are simply processes. Develops, implements, promotes, and monitors continuous improvement in student achievement, reviews, reports, and reacts appropriately to state accountability measures. These are all things that you check a box, I did that. Um, and I think someone brought that to the attention, that this doesn't tell us whether this has actually moved our students. So if you go to the staff relations for me, here again, recruits and assigns the best available personnel, delegates authority to staff members appropriately, proactively works, again, these are processes. That, again, is telling us we can do all these things, but it's not going to change anything. I think the biggest thing that we have talked about is, I don't know when we're coming up with that, but the priorities that we've, the three priorities that will help us, because these are all quantitative, these are all going to be subjective. So, um, or qualitative, I'm sorry, qualitative, these are all going to be subjective. So I think to, um, to my fellow board members, I just, I want to make sure I understand, and we under, we make sure we understand your position, Superintendent. Again, let's look at what it's actually measuring, and then go from there. Because I'd really like to have that discussion. Because I think all we're looking at is just the, the headers, and not thinking about what they're actually going to tell us. So if we could look at that again, I think we did it last time, but maybe we need to do it now that we have the superintendent here with us.
To look at?
Look at what it's measuring.
And that's it?
Yes. So I just wanted to bring this back up on the board so that we could understand why we got to where we got to at the last meeting. And, um, and now I'm hearing something different. So I want to understand what the, the difference is. Just so we can all understand, and we're in public being transparent. We had a meeting last week and we agreed to this, and we had the reasons around it. And so this week, we're having a different discussion. I just want to understand, I want to make sure the public understands as well.
No, I, I didn't waver in my perspective, just to make that clear. So, but, you know, at the, the bull of the board at that time, but we were voicing our thoughts. And so that's why I shared mine. Thank you.
And we also must take into consideration, some of our board members were not here last week when we went more in dea- in detail of this. I know two that are here tonight that weren't here last week. So let's also be fair about that, about our board members.
I think I've heard a, a few questions and a, and a few statements. I won't try to bullet by bullet them. I think the overarching sentiment that I'm sharing here is, that the tool itself is not good. However, when the board said, hey, let's just use the same tool, I thought that was a fair way forward. As we work together to sharpen the tool itself, I agree that this is very, very, um, manila, vanilla, if you will, uh, doesn't offer a lot of substance in the time that we're in right now. I think this worked in a different year and a different time, which is fine. But in the space that we're in, for the level of work that we have and the way that we have to measure everything, this falls short. However, I was okay with the statement that the board has suggested to keep the tool the same. I found the language to be conflicting, but let's change these things. So what I'm sharing is, it's not about the area itself, I'm agnostic to that. It is, why are we changing anything if the recommendation is to keep the tool the same? That's the fundamental sentiment that I have. If we're going to change it, then by all means, let me bring you back a totally different recommendation in terms of everything, because that's what I would have brought. But if we're going to say, let's keep the tool the same, then in a matter of words, then I'd like for us to keep the tool the same. What I underscored about my time as a, a candidate was that the community relations, yes, all of it was underscored, but community relations was the biggest piece, and no one chose community relations here. So that was my statement there. As it concerns overall, the work that is being done is much deeper than what exists here. So to, to invest the time, although I understand the evaluation is important, to invest the time having the, the banter, the back and forth about changing by five percent, just does not seem to keep the focus on what it needs to be on. Thirty percent, I should be the one saying to decrease that in a space where more than seventy percent of kids aren't proficient in, in math and, and, and reading. That should be me. But I believe that the district's North Star is student achievement. And that has been my language, and that has been shared as the vision publicly. And it is how we begin all of our meetings and huddles. And so if the North Star is student achievement, and it was already thirty percent, I just did not find the need to, to have the exchange about, let's change anything. But if we're going to change it, then let's just go back, review it all, and bring forth the substantive recommendations that makes this the tool that we needed to be. That's the conversation that I think the board is saying, let's have. And that's the conversation that I would be willing to have. I just don't think we have the time to have it, which is what I've heard lifted. How you rate me is how you're going to rate me. I, I don't wake up to, to run away from a, a tool, an evaluation. But to your point about feeling like this was some intentions, I think it would be, you know, ignorant of me to sit here and six months into my tenure to act like, um, the, the, the support has been high and the feedback has been high, because it has not been. And the intentional efforts made against and in a different direction are evident to the public. I just have not spoken to them. And so I think those things speak for themselves. I've remained focused on the main thing and kept the main thing, the main thing. And that's our students and our staff. I believe that the delicate balance of both is how you get the greatest results. And staff will speak for me in a room when I'm not in it. I, I'm not worried about this. I just don't believe that the time that it takes to get it right is the time that we have based on the timeline that was thrust upon me just weeks before new board members were, were sworn in. And so if that's the timeline, we're not going to create the type of sharp tool that the board and the superintendent agrees is necessary to effectively evaluate the system through its leader.
Commissioner McKinnon.
I appreciate that, and I, I hear that. And when you talk about keeping the main thing, main thing, I'm very literal. So when we talk about student achievement, that, those right there, you're right. They don't tell us anything about whether we're moving students. So I think maybe the conversation now moves to, um, the three priority areas where we'll talk about the quantitative. I don't want to jump ahead, but the quantitative, I think that would help us think about that as well. I don't
So I don't think you can get there because you haven't decided. So I, I just want to, so a couple of things. It's like, four fifty-nine. I don't hear agreement, and so you're definitely going to have to meet again. Because I don't think you're going to get there tonight. With all due respect, I would say to both of you, you all are more arguing positions and not arguing what, what needs to happen. The best that got to it when you start talking about the importance of student achievement. You all are talking process. Your policy and the contract says you do this now. So you're not late. You're not rushing. You're doing it when the policy and the contracts say do it. So that, so, so be careful of, of that language. You're not asking to, you have agreed to the instrument. That was step one. That is separate than the competency. So you're not changing, you're not changing what is to be weighed, right? I don't hear any of that. But you also could have done that. So the board's recommendation, Dr. Fagin's, was, let's keep the instrument with these weights. You could have come back and said, I don't like this instrument at all, I want to use this instrument. And that's where the conversation would have been. So you all are not bound by any of these things. It's just that the, the board decided, we don't want to start all over with a brand-new instrument, but we do want to change the weights. You exactly have your thoughts on it, but I, 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 what, in your next meeting, please push past the process conversation you're having and really talk about qualitative, right? You're trying to figure out what's going to give us the best qualitative data, us understand. If y'all decide, you still have until October twenty-fifth, y'all could decide, oh, we do want a much more rigorous I'm here. So I think that if you keep the main thing, the main thing, you don't have to make it more difficult than it is. The issue is not about the instrument. My understanding is that's one agreement on the instrument. You all seem to not be where you need to be as a team on this. Because what you haven't had the conversation about are what are the most important things to measure this year. And so when you can have that conversation, you probably then can figure out, are you right on the weights? Well, I don't, you don't have time now, because this was only supposed to be an hour, because you have another meeting. But recall, at the meeting, we said, you're not going to make all the decisions in this one hour, but it will give you a glimpse, and that this will be the first time that the superintendent has joined you. It will give you a glimpse of what you need to do. So my, my advice, it would be, you need to immediately, like tomorrow, y'all need to start looking for at least two more times, because you have the twenty-fifth, the date you're trying to have this done, because you still have to have it done this month. And so the time to say, like, I'm still not hearing you saying you're just going to start all over with an instrument. But you've had a very process conversation today, and that's, and you, you need to have a team conversation around, what are the most important things we need to elevate? And then decide together what those weights should be based on that, on that conversation, would be my suggestion.
Commissioner O'Teague.
Thank you for that, Ms. Hart. I appreciate that. Just to be clear, so that everyone is understanding, we are not changing the process. I was taking a couple of notes, and I'm not repeating the same thing. Just like Ms. Hart said, uh, we did not create a new instrument, and the focus is student achievement. So I do think that we all can agree that we should put a little more emphasis on the staff relations, because there's no student achievement without the staff. And there has been a, a huge emphasis on the staff this season, and I thought that that was fair. And I thought that we did weigh everything very fair with the students in mind. So that's just, uh, my perception from that. And, um, just looking at all the processes below that, of course, the main focus is student achievement. And I do want to ensure that we all can keep the main thing, the main thing, which is our students. And again, without the staff, there is no, there's no student achievement. So I just wanted to say that.
Commissioner McKinnon.
I just wanted to be clear about what we asked the superintendent to bring, to, to bring back today, what we were going to discuss. I want to be clear about that. Because we, I think we talked about this, and then we talked about the priorities. So we talked, I wanted to be clear about what we
So in addition to that, the board recommendation was, so there was a requirement in the contract for quantitative measures. The board members who were here agreed that, the, in the current evaluation, those are not quantitative measures. So your suggested, your recommendation to the superintendent to include quantitative measures was to the board, there were approved priorities in June twenty-twenty-four when the budget was approved, and you asked for those three priorities, um, it's, oh, there they are. For those three priorities, for the superintendent to suggest two to three quantitative measures under those three priorities, which are improve academic growth, achievement, and literacy levels for all students, recruit and increase the retention of the most effective district leaders and teachers in the nation, prepare students for the global workforce through rigorous coursework and certifications, and support, supportive, high-quality facilities and learning environments. So I don't, so, Dr. Fagin, did you suggest two to three quantitative measures?
Yes.
Okay. So, so that's, so, and, and also, if you recall, it's like, it depends on how far you are on these competencies, whether you get to that today. You must get to it by October twenty-fifth. Like, you got to get it to it, because you need to finish your process per your policy, per contract. But we, you recall, said you might not get to that, that conversation today, which, which is okay. So you're clearly going to need a couple of more meetings, because you need to first spend, you know, give yourself probably thirty more minutes on the weights and decide how you're going to move forward. If you can't, um, um, get to an agreement, and then you still need to, to the, how, how quantitative measures will show up in the, in the evaluation. And then also, there was a piece around the informal evaluation. You still got to think through, what does that mean? What does that look like? And then, is the date the first? And if so, that, then that signals to when the, when the other information needs to, needs to be in.
Last time, Board Member McKinnon.
It's a discussion, right? We're supposed to be figuring out. I have questions. I have questions. The question that I have then is, most of these are around student achievement, quantitative, the quantitative measures that we're asking. So I'm trying to figure out, is this separate and distinct from those five competencies? Or will these be embedded up under those five competencies that we've had there? So would it be to the superintendent is asking that we keep it at 30% for student achievement? So whatever the quantitative measures are there, it would go under that?
That's another decision point. Recall, you all talked about a part one and part two, and even where they weighted. Like, was the instrument?
Yes.
75% and the measures here 25%? Like, so many ways, but that's not, that's a team decision that y'all have to make.
Correct. And so I think there's, there's discussion, and there's, there's a way to, I think, balance this if, if we think of putting those things, if that's student achievement, because I heard the superintendent say that that's the main thing, it's the main thing. Most of these things are around student achievement. I know bullet point number one is around student achievement. Bullet number, point number two is around staff, I guess, relation. And bullet point number three would be around student achievement. So if we go, if we embed those quantitative measures within that instrument under those competencies, then I think we could go with the superintendent's suggestion that we, student achievement is 30%, and we keep those things the way they are. So I, again, I want to focus on the main thing too, and I want us to, I hear you about the, the process and getting to the meat of the matter. And so that's why I wanted us to look at this again, so we could try to get to the meat of the matter. While I love to meet with my fellow board members, if we could, and we could get this done, I don't want to rush it, but I want to make sure that we're moving.
Yeah, you're not going to get that done right now.
I just want to make sure we're moving to the next thing.
I'm going to say, I'm glad you love meeting with your colleagues because you will be meeting again with your colleagues. And that meeting could be very fruitful if, if it really is about that, right? And so, like, the superintendent made a great point, right? Student achievement is top. Well, none of you said, well, student achievement should be 60% and everything else should be 5%. So I'm saying, you could do whatever you want to do. You all stuck with what you saw, but it's your evaluation. So nobody said, measure nothing but student achievement. You could do whatever you want to do. If, if you don't forget anything else, as the board and superintendent, you run this district. You can do whatever you want to do. So you came, like, relax, relate, trust, and come together to talk about what the district need, not what an individual board member need, not what the superintendent need. What does the district need to move forward? And what's the best thing y'all could do together as a team to get there? And I think you're not as far apart as you think you are because number one, you're talking about five percentage points. And so what does that really look like? And are you measuring the things? And when the superintendent presents whatever quantitative measures, y'all may decide. Like, she could have a, she may have a recommendation that said, this does go under this, and this makes the case. I don't know, like, that's another meeting, right? Like, but be creative, not put yourself in a box. Be creative about what should you do. But just understand that the reason you're doing this now is because your policy and your superintendent's contract require you to do it now. Thank you.
Commissioner Hugh Garcia, Commissioner Williams.
Thank you. I, I think the bulk of our discussion in future meetings are going to be, how did you, how did you get to this concrete measure? What was the, what's the history of how we measure these things? What do our currents? We're going to have a lot of questions about quantitative measures. And so, and then we still deciding on the weight and how those fit in. I would rather focus our energy there. And I heard Board Member McKinney, and I think we're both passionate. Been clear, right? But we also want there to be trust of this process. At this stage, I think we have opportunities to make sure that we, we, we get it understanding progress because it's just about moving forward. This evaluation process is just to, where should our resources go? How do we support you as our, our leader? And so I would just urge us to move forward with the percentages and focus on the quantitative measures.
Commissioner Williams.
Where in this document do we use the evaluation of your employees? Like, teachers, like, the teachers get the tripod study from the students, and the principal is evaluated by the staff. Is there a place in this document for your staff to weigh in?
There, in the current evaluation, there is no place for the staff to directly weigh in, which I would have added. In the current document, I believe it says something to the degree of that I ensure that an accurate performance evaluation or something like that exists.
Well, I said that because it's 10% of the teacher's evaluation. It's the tripod, it's called, well, the students actually evaluate. And then the principal has the one where his teachers evaluate. So I was just curious as to know if her staff has any weight in this document.
And so I want to say to the board again, the questions you're asking, what you want, you should be saying, I recommend that we do this thing. And then as a team, y'all decide where that goes. So it seems like sometimes you're going to think someone else is supposed to tell you what this is supposed to look like. If you think some is supposed to be there, you need to put it on the table because you still have to August. So, you know, Dr. Fagin, you just said you would have added something. You still can. Y'all don't have to finalize this until August. That's why I said y'all should come together and really get into a quality conversation about what's needed. Commissioner Hugh Garcia, I heard you. I would say part of that is a holistic conversation too, right? It doesn't have to be so bifurcated, right? You all can decide, oh, those are really good, you know, if the superintendent has measures. And y'all decide that you want, that you all agree that the student achievement is 30% or you may decide it's 40%. I don't know the answer to that. I'm saying it's clear, as I told you, this meeting will tell you, do you need successive meeting? And you do. And it's just that you need to come with ideas and thoughts about what would make it better. You need to be fair because you're still in September, and you don't want to throw some document on the superintendent that she hadn't seen. Like, why, you know, I mean, that, I mean, I wouldn't want that unless she, if she brought a brand-new document, that's different because she's saying, here's what I want you to do. It was not, I think, you all did the right thing, not trying to say, here's what we're going to measure, and here's the instrument that we're going to do. So to be caught up in a couple of percentage points, you're not as far away as you think you are. And so when you come back and we're saying, we're going to come at this as a team about what do our, what is fair to our staff, to our community, to our children, to the board, to the superintendent, you probably couldn't get there. You probably could get there. And so you may have a lot more ideas. At that point, at least as a group, you're discussing them. And so I, you know, I, you, other than you need, you're going to definitely have to set the next step so that you can really be in conversation as a team about this. You're not going to get there tonight, but you're not. I don't want you to leave here thinking you're as far away as you think you are because you're really not.
Vice Chair La.
I love your idea. Keith Williams and Superintendent Tony. Superintendent Fagin. I have been trying to get the evaluation changed for umpteen years. This is, I agree with everybody that's commented. I think we need to do a new evaluation to keep the student focus, the student focus, main thing, and to get the teachers' input.
Commissioner McKinney.
I think what would be helpful is Superintendent Fagin's, if we could actually get your input because I don't know that we have anything. That would be helpful for the next conversation about what you would look at these, what you would consider the quantitative measures. So we can, we can think about, as I think Ms. Hart said, we don't have to think about this in a bifurcated way. We can think about how do we incorporate this so that we have a robust evaluation system for this year? I think we all agree that it's too, we have to use what we have right now because it's just too late and it's not fair to do a whole different tool. So I'm looking forward to, after this, looking at a more robust tool with, with you working side by side with us to do that. So I think what would be helpful to move the conversation along is if we have your input because I feel like we keep coming here, and we don't have anything from you, but we keep handing over stuff. So if you would give us your input, you've got what we have. And if we can get your input so that at the next meeting, we can have a rope, we could all have some time to look at it, and we can all have a robust conversation around it.
Great, I appreciate that. I think to conclude our time here, I'll share out what I've shared with the chair and then forward it over afterwards for the board to reflect and review on. The team, I think we've taken our sharpest review with an understanding and consideration of just when data is released to the state. We simply just don't have a lot. But what we have arrived at in terms of priority one, I also shared the tool and highlighted in the tool where these three priorities already exist for the board. Priorities one and three already exist with an achievement component. Of course, it is not the exact same language, but it is quite comparable. And then priority two exists under staff relations. So under priority one, improve academic growth, achievement, and literacy levels for all students. We went with the metrics that the state would determine and identify as the annual measurable objectives. Those are not released yet and will not be released until December. However, we've taken how we ended the year in grades three through five, grades six through eight, and grades nine through 12. We ended grades three through five with 25.4% of students meeting the AMO. And so we've determined that a 2% increase could be something reasonable that we could accomplish within the next four to six months. Grades six through eight, 17% is where we concluded the year, and 19% is where we're sharing, and this is a draft. Grades nine through 12, we concluded with 24.6% of students achieving the AMO. And then we've landed at 26.6% right now. I would say that once it's established, it sounds like Ms. Hart Wigginton, that once it's established, it's established. However, I'm sharing that we don't have the data from the state yet. And so this is literally just me looking at the end of the year, asking the team, how does the state arrive at its stretch goals? And then landing somewhere that I think we could get to in the short amount of time that we have with the resources that we have. Under priority two, recruit and increase retention of the most effective district leaders and teachers in the nation for our students. We have our metrics for decreasing the number of teacher vacancies and instructional positions by at least 1% and decreasing the number of unlicensed teachers by at least 2%. These measures are taken, understanding that we have an increase in the number of students and the number of instructional vacancies this year. So this particular quantitative measure will prove quite substantive, and we'll place the actual numbers, the raw numbers with them as well so that we know the baseline numbers from last year. Priority three, prepare students for global, for the global workforce through rigorous coursework and certifications in supportive, high-quality facilities and learning environments. Our metrics here are to increase the number of CTE offerings by two programs. We currently have 47 programs to get that to 49, and we'll identify the two that we believe we can get done. We landed at two because the deadline from the state is February, so we don't have a lot of time to increase this by a lot. But in our strategic plan, you will see the four-year proposal for year over year about how we plan to move this in a substantive way. An increase of on-track students, this is from 88.2% to 89%. This is with grades nine and 10. We have currently 495 more grades nine and 10 students this year than we had last year. And so for us to maintain and to increase will prove substantive in this way. To increase the number of students enrolled in dual enrollment courses by 2%. So that's where we've landed in terms of the quantitative measures aligned with these particular priorities. But as we move forward to have the board retreat, a scorecard will be provided where more than these three areas and quite more than, you know, these eight quantitative metrics, if you will, will be provided in terms of what we're chasing, baseline as well as to move forward for the four-year proposed strategic plan.
We will get with Ms. Clark on tomorrow to send out the question as to when we will meet again. She will get us a couple of dates together. We, she looked for at least two more meetings, at the least two more. And remember, we said we will have this completed by the 25th, which is next Friday. Next Friday, it's the 25th. So be prepared to have at least two more meetings before then. Are there any other questions or concerns?
Commissioner McKinney, your light on.
Thank you for that. I'm looking forward to seeing that in writing. One of the things I would like to do when you do send it to us is sort of a little bit of a rationale, put the rationale that you gave us for the reason why you picked those. That would be great. For the listening public, can you please tell them what AMOs mean?
I shared that AMO is annual measurable objective.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner McKissick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is there, can we look into whether or not there's a provision within the state regulations or whether or not we can have a virtual meeting? We used to be able to do that. So I don't know if that post-pandemic is still permissible, but perhaps our general counsel can speak to that.
I can advise the, I'll look into it, and I can advise the board. I know there are very limited circumstances, but I'll advise the board on that.
Thank you, because I asked because even prior to the pandemic, we would have committee meetings, and if you cannot physically be present, you could call into it. So just if, if something can help for everyone who has very full schedules can, whatever we can do to try to accommodate those additional meetings.
Okay, we'll look into it.
Thank you.
No other business. This meeting is adjourned. We'll be back in about eight minutes, six minutes.